Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. It is now six o'clock on October the 11th. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. So Nick Lavaca called and asked to be excused for the evening. Are there any exceptions to that?
No.
Okay.
I didn't say nothing.
All right. So Nick is excused. And then also, Joellen is also out for the evening and for good reason, and so we'll excuse her as well. Moving on to roll call, so Councilman Owen.
Yeah.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
And Councilman Allen.
Present.
All right, thank you, everyone. Looking for an approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, items one through five. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carries. No special guests tonight or presentation, so we will move on to reports. Online should be our city administrator, Charlie Bush. Are you there?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. No report this evening.
All right, thank you. Moving on then to council report. Councilman Owen. Any report, Councilman Owen? Okay, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to give an update on our Public Works Committee meeting. We talked about the utility rates, and we will be seeing them come to the work session on November 1st of this year, followed by a public hearing and a first read at the November 8th council meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Thank you. The Public Works meeting was a good meeting. I want to make note that in regards to any sort of rate increases, I was actually approached by several different constituents with the assumption that rate increases were going, if they did increase and there was excess, that should the levy not pass, that that fund would be used then to fund firefighters. I want to make it clear in that discussion that that is not, in fact, the case, that the excess funds collected as a rate increase in any sewer, garbage, or stormwater legally cannot be used to fund additional firefighters. Those rates are paying for services and they are not a tax. So I just wanted to clear up any sort of issue that the community or constituents might have in regards to that, as that was clarified and discussed. I also wanted to see if there was something that maybe public safety or the police could possibly put out a memo to the school district in regards to reminding children as they are crossing streets that they might want to put their cellphones down and look both ways as they are crossing streets. I've had several people complain, not only do we have people speeding, most significantly in my ward, on State Street and Ferry Street, we have kids crossing streets during the higher traffic hours when school is being released, on bicycles and walking and scooters and all the sorts, and they are on their cellphones as well, holding up, they're not looking at traffic coming, going, or confirming that it's even stopped. And several people have witnessed children almost be hit, at no fault of the drivers. The drivers are, thank goodness, awake and paying attention. So if there's a possibility of reminding the schools through a memo or something to have that discussion with their classrooms or in any sort of interactions that you have, that would be a great reminder for them. Also, in regards, in the Public Works, we did have a brief discussion on the possibility of bringing together a community yard waste disposal day with the leaves and weather changing and the leaves falling, that that might be something that the community might take advantage of. So together with Public Works, they're working on a day possibly to do that here this fall, so you'll stay tuned for a date.
Very nice, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Just had one constituent express concern to me about speeding on railroad. Otherwise, nothing further. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Allen?
I wasn't going to say anything there, Madam Mayor, but I think last meeting we had, there was a concern about cars speeding. I live a block north of the high school, and 7:30 or 2:30, I hope Chief Dan will maybe have some officers patrolling that area. And, you know, you give a couple warnings, it could be warnings, but maybe you're going to nip it in the bud, so that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of things. First, last Monday, I and the three of the mayors met with Representative Rick Larson, and we discussed flood issues, especially with that as an ever-present danger with as we move into fall and winter. We discussed the funding for FEMA and also the concerns for the flood insurance. There are concerns about this. All of these impact our citizens, and Councilman, or not Councilman, but Congressman Larson wanted to make sure that all the citizens have access to financial assistance over this. So that was an interesting discussion, and probably you'll hear more regarding that. I wanted to thank the Public Works Committee for being present tonight. All of them were here. It was very important information that they discussed and will be having discussion of, especially as we move forward into 2026 and 2027, when we design and build our new sewer treatment plant. I want to thank Chief Wagner for being present at the library last night. He did a presentation on the fire levy, and I understand that that went pretty well. So thank you for doing that. And just one last thing, I don't know if there's a question or not, but as you may notice, the agendas look a little bit different. We know are longer using agendas. We have a new agenda, and that's why it has a different look to it, so just kind of an FYI. All right, that is all I have. We will move on to public comment. I will move first to those within the chamber here, and then I will ask anybody online if they would like to give comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And because state law prohibits the use of city facilities to be the purpose of supporting or opposing campaign or ballot propositions, we respectfully request that the public comment not make reference to these suggestions or to such matters. Okay, so it is 6:08. I will open up the floor for public comment, for anybody who would like to do that here in the chamber. Oh, yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Jim Lee. I think some of you know me. I own Double Barrel BBQ with my wife Nancy. And I came to talk about or comment on or ask questions about how the grant programs were developed, why they were developed, the way they were developed, and what's going to happen with the money that doesn't get distributed under the way it's set up now. So one of my first questions is, why weren't the businesses in the city notified directly via email?
So, Jim, not to be disrespectful at all, but this is just a comment period? It's not a Q and A?
Then I'll run down through my questions as comments, and we'll go that way.
Excellent, and I do believe that somebody will be in touch with you and will be able to answer those questions for you. So I'll make sure that somebody from our staff does that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So as I understand it, the monies that are available are federal monies from the American Recovery Plan Act. And if you look on their website, it lists their top priorities are for the businesses that are hurt by COVID. And so when we look at those monies being distributed to the businesses that are hurt by COVID, my questions are, why didn't we email the businesses in town? Why was it something that had to be found? What's going to happen to the money that doesn't get awarded? There were only two businesses that applied for $140,000, for a maximum of $10,000 each. There's $120,000 left. What's going to happen to that?
We actually have had some other applications come in.
That's good. That's really good. I'm glad to hear it. We went around to our business owner friends and advised them to. So some of them, I hope, are people that we know and actually spoke to about it, to make them aware. Why was it something that had to be put to a public vote? Was that something that was just constructed as a, let's hear from the public? Or was it something that was required at some phase? And why were the vote administrators told that one chip was a yes chip and the other chip was a no chip? Because when we went to the library, that's how they explained it to us. And if you look at the flyer they had up at the library, it said, "Vote for the one you want, and vote, you vote yes for the one you want and no for the one you don't." So they put us in competition with each other. It's bad enough that nobody knew about it. It's bad enough that it's a reimbursement grant. The businesses who've been hurt don't have 10 grand laying around to do this. So the idea that they've got to come up with the money to get the money is kind of laughable. We've lost eight years of our retirement, at best, my financial guesses, right? Because of what we went through for COVID. And I know that the businesses out there that are affected by this went through the same type of thing we did, and some in a much worse way, because a lot of them, some are gone, right? The coffee stand down the street, that independent coffee stand, doesn't have $10,000 to spend fixing their place up to get the $10,000 back. So those are my questions, and I'd be grateful for some answers.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jim, and also Nancy for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, anybody else who would like to make public comment? Seeing none within the chamber, I'm going to move on up to the individuals online. Is there anybody online who would like to make comment? Just unmute your mic. All right. I don't see anyone, so at this time, I am going to close public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business. We, last week, discussed the 2023 budget amendment, and Kelly, you going to lead us forward here?
Yes. All right, so we adopted the 2023-2024 biennial budget in November of 2022. We did our first budget amendment for the 2023 in May of 2023, and then had our public hearing for the Second Amendment on the September 27th meeting. So presented in the packet today, just taking some feedback from council on the last meeting, we've presented the budget in a couple of different formats. The first format is in the actual ordinance that we request being approved in Appendix A. So Appendix A of the ordinance includes the budget showing the fund number, the description of the fund, our budgeted revenues, our budgeted expenditures, and then the excess or deficit between those two. We also wanted to present it in a different way, so we have an attached memo as well. The memo includes the same funds, the same fund description, but also includes our actual beginning cash and investments for each of our funds, the actual number we carried over, and then those same budgeted revenues, budgeted expenditures, and then what we are projecting our ending cash and investment in each one of those funds will be. The third way we're presenting it is the more detailed look, and just wanted to walk you through that more detailed look, since it is a very large document with a lot of detail. Bill, if you could bring that up, if you have it. It's on page 117 of the council packet. If you could scroll down. Just want to show you an example of a fund. So this is Fund 314. This is our Transportation Impact Fee Reserve Fund. I'm just showing you this fund as an example, because all the activity is on one page. But on this detailed view of our budget, at the very top, it starts with the fund number and the fund name, so 314, the Transportation Impact Fee Reserve Fund. The first section starts with our budgeted revenues. We don't include the cash balance on here, because it impacts the bottom number, so we're just trying to show you revenues minus expenditures. The gray line item in the middle of the page with the bolded numbers are the total revenues for the fund. If you could scroll down just a little bit, Bill, so we could see the bottom of the page. The second section of all of these reports has the expenditures, and then you see another gray bolded line with total expenditures. And then the bottom of each fund shows the excess or the deficit, so revenues minus expenditures. So you'll see the same format for every fund. Some funds are several pages long. This one is just one page long. The column to the left is the original budget amount, and by original, we mean the budget that's currently in place. So we approved a 2023 budget amendment in May, so the original line is that approved line item. The middle column there, the proposed budget, is what we're recommending be approved this time, and then what is the difference? And then on the far right is our notes and remarks for references. So just wanted to give you a brief overview of what's included in the packet. The last page of the report gives you an even further summarized version of that, so it has total original budget, total proposed budget. So just giving the budget in a couple different versions. We've also included in that more detailed version, we've highlighted some items in orange and yellow, so things that, significant changes we've made and minor changes we've made since our first read of this item. Couple of the significant items, and this isn't a list of everything, it's just highlighting. In our general fund, we have impact fees that we collect and pass through to the school district, so we have a revenue increase as that revenue is larger than we anticipated. However, we have a corresponding expenditure increase as well, as we pass those funds directly onto the school district. We also saw a significant increase in investment interest, so we've included that. It went up from about $195,000 to about $500,000 this year in the general fund, and also showed a transfer in from the American Rescue Plan Act, our ARPA funding for the fire department radios, which the council has previously approved, and then a corresponding expenditure from that activity as well. In the Parks and Facilities Fund, we've revised that fund, just moving around some projects, when we're going to complete those projects, so when the revenues and expenditures occurred. Two of the bigger ones are $900,000 in grants that we're going to push to 2024, when we'll actually have the activity. Same thing for Artiriel Streets and the ARPA Fund, just moving expenditures, revenues and expenditures for when they will actually occur. Also, just wanted to point out a couple of funds. Not all of our funds have revenues and expenditures in the same year. So the City Council Strategic Reserve Fund, you'll see that that has a deficit this year. The council previously approved $300,000, move out of that fund to pay a longstanding inter-fund loan that the general fund had with the sewer fund, so we paid that back this year. As we discussed last meeting, the ARPA Fund, that's one-time federal money, so we received that money in 2021 and 2022. We're not going to receive any more of that money, so we're slowly spending it down. You'll see that fund has a deficit of about $2 million, and that's us spending that money down. Same thing with funds 301 through 314. These are funds that we get in for, we get money for restricted purposes, so we build up those funds, like the transportation impact fees, those types of things. We build up those funds, and then we spend them on specific projects. So you may see a deficit in those funds this year, but it's because we've built those funds up over time, and in all those funds, we have sufficient fund balance to cover those expenditures. Same thing in our Equipment Replacement Fund. We build up those funds over time and then spend on planned expenditures, as well as our Public Facilities Fund. So that's an overview of some of the significant items in the budget. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Kelly? This was really well done, by the way. I greatly appreciated how you put that together, Kelly. I know it was a lot of work, but appreciate it.
Okay, Kelly, thank you for explaining. This is all over my head. There's an old saying, "If you can't dazzle them with brilliance, baffle them with BS." So that's kind of how, I know your accounting is way different than I had when I was in business. If I had money at the end of the day, I could pay bills. And I know that cities and municipalities and counties are all different, but where are we at? Are we in good shape? Or, you know, I mean, other than fund transfers to next year and blah, 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 where is this city of Cedar Valley looking right now?
We have significant cash to pay our immediate needs. We don't have everything we need. There's, you know, several things that we'll bring up in the 2024 budget that the city would like to do, you know, have an HR manager fully funded to the ideal model in ERNR. But currently, we have sufficient funds to pay all of our bills and continue operating at our current levels. We, the area we look at the most is the general fund. So right now, we have an excess in the general fund projected for the end of the year of about $90,000. You know, that may sound like a lot of money, but considering our budgeted expenditures, it's not a significant dollar amount. We also look at Parks and Facilities Cemetery Fund and the Street Fund, kind of all together with the general fund, because they primarily have the same funding sources. And the main funding sources of all those combined is property tax, sales tax, and utility tax. So right now, we're in the positive for those funds.
Okay, any other questions for Kelly? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to pass the budget amendments as written.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owens, to approve Ordinance 2057-23, amending the city's 2023 budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business, we have the purchase of the police department vehicles, and Chief McElwraith?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. That time of year, again, we're trying to purchase vehicles. This is a first read, but I'm asking for action tonight. One thing to note here is vehicles are hard to come by right now. We had previously got approved for the purchase of 2020-23 vehicles last September. Those were ordered, we never got those vehicles because of back order. Those were 2023 Ford Explorers with the high demand. Basically, it's pushed back to 2024. So that was already approved by council, but I'm including that just because of the struggle of getting vehicles. Right now, we can't order anymore Ford Explorer vehicles because they're not available. They're not taking any more orders right now. So in order to try to make things work, what we're trying to do here is, what's available right now for police vehicles are Dodge Durangos, and that's it. So we're looking at ordering two of the 2023 Dodge Durangos and fully equip them for the road. Those already have VIN numbers, so it sounds like those will be coming quicker than the 2024 Ford Explorers, but we expect those to probably be available sometime in 2024. Unknown when that's going to occur. We're just kind of waiting, and at the whim of the vehicles being made. The other thing we tried to do here is try to think outside the box here. I have my Ford F-150 pickup truck that is fully equipped with equipment. What we're thinking about doing here right now is, and we also have lieutenant's vehicle, which is a fairly new Ford Explorer, fully equipped. Those are two vehicles we could immediately have an impact on our fleet vehicles right now. We are incurring more and more maintenance costs on all of our old vehicles, and it continues to grow. So what we're looking at here is buying two 2023 Mazda CX-50s administrative vehicles for lieutenant and myself, bare minimum stuff, and getting these vehicles out to the fleet for relief. It makes sense, because we can get two of these vehicles for the same price as one patrol vehicle, which still fits the budget that we're budgeted for three vehicles next year. So looking at it, it makes sense. I'm just asking for approval. Once again, we're already approved for the purchase of two of the Ford Explorers, which are now pushed back sometime in 2024. That amount is $116,933.25 to be paid on delivery. The second is the two approval of two 2023 Dodge Durango police vehicles. That is for, asking for approval of $111,015.48 to be paid on delivery, and also asking for approval of the two 2023 Mazda CX-50s. That amount is $73,374.72 to be paid on delivery. And again, those two vehicles, the two Mazas, are available right now, and the expected delivery would be end of this month.
All right. Good, really thinking outside the box, yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said that. You really have done that. Thank you, Chief McElwraith, for doing that. So any questions for Chief McElwraith regarding the situation here?
Quickly, with the spare vehicles, are you intending to retire those out then?
I don't think we have, would they be put in our reserve fleet? We can't give up any vehicles until we get more vehicles, so we're going to have to keep them right now.
Okay.
Until we get those other vehicles, because we still, I think we're going to get the Durangos before the Explorers, but those are probably all going to come
Good, really thinking outside the box, yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said that. You really have done that. Thank you, Chief McElwray, for doing that. So any questions for Chief McElwray regarding the situation here?
Quickly, with the spare vehicles, are you intending to retire those out then?
I don't think we have, would they be put in our reserve fleet? We can't give up any vehicles until we get more vehicles, so we're going to have to keep them right now.
Okay.
Until we get those other vehicles, because we still, I think we're going to get the Durangos before the Explorers, but those are probably all going to come in 2024, but unknown timeframe. Like I said, we ordered the vehicles, the Ford Explorers, last September, so I would assume next summer, but who knows?
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is it premature? I'd like to make a motion to...
Put it out there and see if your council mates go along with you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the police vehicles that Dan talked about.
All right. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay. So any more discussion before I make the call?
I have a, just one question.
Go ahead, thank you.
Regarding the CX-50 administrative vehicles, what's the primary difference that doesn't make them like a...
We're going to go bare minimum, so the radios for vehicles cost, the main head is about $6,000, and then a backup radio is another $3,000, so we're pretty much eliminating that. Lights and sirens, a lot of our duties are going to meetings, responding to serious events that are after the immediate response. So, I mean, we are administrative function vehicles to get back and forth to work and meetings and such.
Okay, gotcha. And would they be kind of the permanent replacements for your guys' vehicles?
Right, I mean, these are going to be probably lightly used, and, you know, I'm just thinking later on, so, I mean, I'll probably be driving that vehicle up until I leave and pass it on in the future, so if we decide to do something different and vehicles become available later, we could always transfer them to the city or figure something else to do with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussions?
If not, all those in favor of approval of purchase of the two 2023 Mazda CX-50 administrative vehicles for fiscal year 2023, and two 2023 Dodge Durango police vehicles, and two 2024 Ford Explorer Interceptor police vehicles for fiscal year 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, next item, speaking of vehicles, we're moving on to the purchase of fire department vehicles. Chief Wagner?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I also have a couple of vehicles on here for this evening. These are already budgeted in the 2023-2024 biennial budget. We have been able to earmark these vehicles to the Department of Enterprise Services with the government pricing and contract. Unlike some of the allocations before with our ambulances, we're hoping we'll be able to get these in a much more timely manner now that we have them earmarked. We are being told we could see one maybe by the end of this year, and maybe one next year. These, as you know, if you went out to buy a pickup truck in a Dodge Ram 1500 or a Chevy 2500 right now on the market, it's probably $75,000 to $100,000 apiece. These will be fully equipped, outfitted, light sirens, radios, all the markings and everything on them, and we'll be able to meet our current ERNR funding for each of those, probably only because Glenn is able to do a lot of this work himself and saves us a ton of time, energy, and money. And we also will be able to utilize the savings of that ARPA fund purchase with those radios that Dan just talked about, because those are on order and will not be a part of this upfitting. As we've talked about before, where we used to have the ERNR funding of about a 2% to 3% increase each and every year, we have, like everybody else, experienced double-digit increases over the last couple of years, and we're really extremely lucky to keep these under that budget. And with this ability to get these approved, we're hoping to get them ordered and hopefully see them before 2024 ends.
All right, are there any questions for Chief Wagner? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to allow staff to finalize ordering of the two replacement vehicles.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, and I heard two, but I'm going to give this to Councilwoman Diamond, the second by Councilwoman Diamond, allowing for the finalization of these orders for the 2023-2024 budget. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, last item of the night is the revised interlocal agreement, Skagit County for source control inspection, and this would be David Lee's, but I believe, Mr. Freiburger, are you going to be taking this for him?
Yes, I can do that. This is actually a pretty simple one. Skagit County and the city have entered into an agreement for them to perform our local source control inspections. We were notified by the county that they had made a revision to one of the numbers. It's fairly slight. This is just to correct the paperwork and make sure that the dollars match in the agreement, what will be billed by them. So we're requesting your action tonight, if you're willing to authorize the mayor to sign the attached revised interlocal agreement between Skagit County and the city of Cedar Woolley, for the county to provide reimbursable services.
Any questions for Mark? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, thank you. So a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen, to authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the revised interlocal agreement between Skagit County and the city of Cedar Woolley for the county to provide reimbursable services. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, everyone. That is approved, and before I adjourn, I just want to point out the minutes for both the Finance and Technological Committee, as well as the Safety Committee, and also to make you aware that at the next meeting, or, yeah, next meeting's on the 25th, as is the Finance Information Technological Committee meeting, which is happening at 5:00. So public is welcome to that as well. All right, council, council, I need you to stay because after we adjourn, we have a closed session. It's to discuss collective bargaining agreement. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. We are adjourned.